Good evening and welcome to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals' public hearing for August 6, 2021. If you're present and you have a cell phone, please turn it off, take calls outside, and communicate outside as well. If you wish to speak in favor or in opposition to a petition during public hearing, please come to the lectern, state your name and address for the public record. This meeting is live on LTC. Members of the public can Zoom and call in, and all documents are loaded up on the website. Beginning to continue business, ZBA 2021-21, variance is at Lock &amp; Real Estate Group, 380 Lawrence Street. Section 6.1, Lock &amp; Real Estate Group has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals seeking variance approval to construct a three-story, 35-unit lodging house at 380 Lawrence Street. The property is located in the neighborhood business in B zoning district and requires variance approval per section 6.1 and any other relief required of Lowell zoning ordinance.
Not here on Zoom, Chair. Can you hear me, okay?
We can't really hear him.
Good evening, sir. If you could speak a little bit about, state your name and address for the record, give us a little background on your petition, please.
Yes, so I actually did send in an email to the city today. So, the applicant has reviewed the city comments and done an internal review, and there's this time where they were not moved, they will not be moving forward with this application, and looking to withdraw this application before the board without prejudice.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We did hear that. The audio is back on now. Thank you. So, you're going to wish to withdraw without prejudice? That being said, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-21 for 380 Lawrence Street to withdraw the petitioner's application without prejudice.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
By Mr. Vice Chairman, I have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Peck.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Briere.
Accept withdrawal.
Member Proco.
Accept withdrawal.
Sir, your request has been granted by the Lowell zoning board. We wish you the best of luck.
Appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman, and the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Enjoy the remaining of your summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, ZBA 2021-27 for variance, George and Sheila Welsh at 77 Constance Drive, section 4.3.5.4, section 4, section 5.1. George K. Welsh and Sheila M. Welsh have applied for variance approval to legalize an existing shed and mudroom that were constructed without the benefit of the permit at 77 Constance Drive. The property is located in the suburban neighborhood, single-family SSF zoning district, and requires variance approval for relief from the shed setback per section 4.3.5 subsection 4, relief from the side yard setback per section 5.1, and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Is there a petitioner here this evening, Mr. Welsh? Good evening, sir. Just give us a brief outline of why we're here tonight.
Okay. First of all, my name is George Kenneth Welch. I'm with my wife Sheila.
Welcome.
Back in September of '87, we purchased a lot on Constance Drive in Lowell to construct a single-family with some middle required plans and documents to satisfy Lowell Planning Department and zoning board regulations. During the time at the property, we have constructed a shed in 1993 at the rear of the property, and in '95, we constructed an eight-foot-by-14 mudroom on the driveway side of the house. Both structures are within the property line. There was no intent of disregarding lot lines or circumventing ZBA requirements. However, we were unfamiliar of the zoning board regulations contributed to this issue at hand. We, the Welch family, have lived there for 33 years and have maintained a healthy property with pride of ownership and respect of our neighbors. We have engaged with the neighbors to ensure the construction of the mudroom and shed at the rear of the lot would not be a hindrance or invasion on property lines and privacy within their yard or home. There was no objection to demand to cease these additions at that time. In the spring of 2020, we received notice by the City of Lowell Inspectorial Services that the additions in question, both the mudroom and shed, required a zoning variance of side yard and rear yard setback. Upon notice, we sought professional advice and discovered they indeed are required to have a site variance for both side setbacks under ZBA regulations. We maintain there was no malice, no disregard for ZBA regulations, and the builds were to enhance their living space, our living space, and storage space for our family. We, the owners, have been informed and required for the variance approval under section 5.1, dimensional requirements under the City of Lowell zoning board appeals regulations. We, the owners, state the additions were built to satisfy space needs and was not an intent to violate ZBA rules. We, at variance, we, the Welch family, request a variance at 77 Constance Drive under dimensional requirements for the following: side yard setback for existing mudroom for a 12-foot-by-5-inch to the abutting property of the Draper family at 85 Constance Drive in Lowell; also a side setback and rear setback for an existing shed at the rear of the property at Constance Drive to the abutting property of the estate forest. In conclusion, this variance approval is not a detriment to the public good as the structure are within the homeowner's property, and there is no issue with the direct rebuttal at 85 Constance Drive. This variance does not substantially derogate from the intent to zoning. It was no malice or intent to violate ZBA regulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Welsh. We appreciate your candor in outlining in detail the communication here. For the record, submittal of neighborhood participants in favor of this stating that it does not affect them in any way, and the Welch family is a great neighbor and very well aware of their situation over there. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? No one on Zoom? In favor? No? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, ma'am?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that summary and history of the project, Mr. Welch. To me, I think this is more of like a clerical, just a formality. It doesn't, you know, affect the neighborhood or the city in a negative way. It actually adds on to the home, but also to the neighborhood. And I've heard the neighbors are in support of this, so to me, it's just a formality, just to rectify. And in total, I think you need less than five feet of relief in total side and rear yard setback and all that. So, overall, I think this is a great addition, a great project, and, you know, hopefully this has been useful to you and your family over the years. So, I have no objections. I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Welsh, for your presentation. If this is, I agree with Van, this is minimal relief that needs to be requested here, especially on the mudroom side, it was 0.84 feet of being requested. The neighbors are in agreement with this, and, you know, this is pretty straightforward. I appreciate you coming before the board, once it was, this discovery was made, instead of just letting it go, because who knows what would have gone down the line, you know. If you sell the property and then something else, other people move in and they have problems, so, but it's good that you've come in before us to get this taken care of. So, I would be in full favor of this, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The relief is minimal, and you've obviously lived in harmony with the neighbors for over 30 years with this structure being there. I support the petition.
Thank you, Mark. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To me, this seems like a procedural oversight that took place back in 1993 that has no impact to your neighbors, to the neighborhood. So, I would fully support this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, I have no further, I have no further questions or comments. I will say that it's a very well-maintained home. It's a beautiful site. You have great neighbors. I've been to the site a couple times. Everyone's very supportive. It's a, it used to be a new developer, but now it's over 33 years old, so your time does fly by. And to the credit of Mr. and Mrs. Welsh, I know you are now, you're a second generation and you have a fourth-generation family living here in Lowell. Your entire family has stayed here. You're wonderful people, and we appreciate you coming forward and dealing with this as you did when it was brought to your attention. You're a good citizen. You're a credit. You're a credit. We appreciate, we appreciate citizens helping us out with these issues, because inspectors are out there. That's it. Any other comments or concerns by the board, DPD? None being heard? May I have a motion, Mr. Clark?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-27 for variance approval under section 4.3.5.4 and section 5.1 for 77 Constance Drive to legalize an existing shed and mudroom constructed without the benefit of the permit.
May I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Briere. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve.
Member Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proco.
Approve.
Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Welsh. You've been unanimously approved. You can move on in your twilight years and enjoy your life. We thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a wonderful night. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Fran, thank you.
Fran, thank you very much. Moving forward under new business, ZBA 2021-29 for special permit, Margaret Fitzpatrick at 680 Rogers Street, section 12.4. Margaret Fitzpatrick is seeking a special permit to operate a dog kennel and grooming service. The property is located in the regional retail IRL zoning district. The application is applying for special permit approved under section 12.4 and for any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you. And you?
I'm very well. If you tell us a little bit about your petition and your business over there, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Excellent. So, about two years ago, my business partner and I were looking at trying to do something different in Lowell. And we were, we looked around at different properties. We wanted to make sure that if we opened a dog daycare, that there would be plenty of outdoor space, because that's really important to us. And then we found the property at 680 Rogers Street, and it served all our needs. It has, we have, it has space for two playrooms on the first floor, a large playroom on the second floor, and a smaller playroom on the second floor, which are also used as tranquility rooms and quiet rooms for naptime. The back parking lot was just over 1,000 square feet, and we were able to convert that into a play yard for the dogs. We have Keystone in parts of it and AstroTurf in other parts of it. We also have various activities for the dogs. We have a pool. We have what's about to be a sandbox for them. We have three dog houses that they like to hang out in. And we have it set up so that there are certain paths, so it slows them down, so we don't have, you know, a rush of dogs ever. And inside, we rehabbed the, so let me get back to the, the parking lot was not in good shape when we got there. It had a lot of trash. It had pieces of just random stuff. So, we got rid of all of that. We cleaned it up, and then we put the play yard down. And we clean the play yard three times a day. We sanitize it three times a day, because keeping things clean is a big priority for us, that we don't want anybody to walk in and ever smell anything that's other than a nice, fresh, clean location. We have, we redid the floors in three of the playroom areas, because there was carpet, and obviously with dogs, carpet is not ideal. So, we removed the carpet and put luxury vinyl tiling down. So, it gets cleaned three times a day as well, and sanitized three times a day. We really realized that in the City of Lowell, there was not any dog daycare in that area, in Belvedere. And they have the animal hospital. They have the Belvedere vet, and, but they don't have any daycare in that area of the city. So, anyone in Belvedere would have to go across the city in order to find daycare. And the two daycares that exist were pretty full and basically not accepting new customers. So, it seemed like the, finding the place in Belvedere was the right place to go, so that we could meet the needs of the neighborhood. About two-thirds of our clients live in Belvedere, and they have all been very grateful that there's something that came to their part of the city. We opened in April and apparently, obviously, did not have the correct permit. I misunderstood some of the directions. I didn't fill out part of the packet of forms that I needed to do. We have since gone back and filled those out, and we have, we had a site plan drawn up as required. We were shut down for two days while we got all the correct paperwork in. And so now I'm here to please petition you that you can grant this, the special permit for operation of the doggy daycare.
Thank you. I really appreciate the background and the history. That property has had some turnover, and...
And we don't plan to turn over.
And I agree with you. The condition of it was becoming an eyesore, not only in the front, but in the back. And I had been, I've been on the property, and you did a great job. I would call it highway debris. It's a shame it travels down that far, but you've done, you've done a wonderful job there.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make that effort known, because there was a lot of clutter there, so we could move on. So, that being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions, just a comment. I wish you the very best in your new endeavor, and thank you for your investment in Lowell.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also, I think it's actually a good thing to have, especially from the stats I see, where in Brockton, there are seven of these, and it's a smaller city, and in Lowell, there's only two. So, I would also say that I have a 150-pound giant schnauzer, that if I could bring him over to your place, it'd be a lot easier than going to Peterborough in New Hampshire. So, I would support this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Ma'am?
I don't have any questions. Just, you know, congratulations and thank you for investing in the city, and, you know, we wish you the very best of luck. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, this seems like a very great idea, and the city will benefit from this. Obviously, you said there's only two, two other businesses like this that are on the other side of town, and I think the area of Belvedere will certainly benefit from this. But I'm just kind of curious on a couple of things. I see, how many parking spaces? So, right now, there's proposed one, two, three, four, five, six parking? Six parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay. Now, how many employees? Is it just yourself that's working?
There are three of us.
Three of yous, okay.
But only two, only two cars from the owners.
Okay. Now, do you have, do you employ like any dog walkers or anybody that like takes the dogs out for walks and stuff?
Not at this point.
Is that like a plan in the future for...
It could be. So far, we haven't had any, any clients asking for that, but we do have connections with people who are willing to do dog walking.
Okay.
So, should it come up as a request, then we could think about that.
Yeah, I think I'm just more thinking about, especially that area right there. It's kind of on a major roadway, thoroughway.
Exactly. That's why we prefer to keep them...
It probably would have to have, if you have dog walkers, you'd probably have to pick them up, bring them, either bring them to the park or bring them to the stadium area or something like that.
Right, yeah. That's why we prefer to have them in the building and in the play yard, which is in the back and is, has, is totally fenced in with six-foot-high or eight-foot-high in some places fence.
I think I'm just more bringing, thinking more of the traffic flow of what's, what your plans are, but if you, I mean, I think you'll be able to work it out in the future if that's something that, you know, certainly if your business builds and you get more, more clientele and more dogs, and more dogs than you can handle, or you want to get them out and get them some more exercise, and it kind of, just kind of looking at it from the traffic flow perspective and the parking and whatnot.
So, we have, our clients don't park for very long, because they, you know, they park, they bring the dog in, and then they leave, or they park, pick up their dog and leave. So, there's been plenty of parking, because it's a constant turnover, jarring drop-off or pickup time.
Okay. I guess on the, on the other end of that, too, as far as the boarding dogs, do you happen to have bored dogs sometimes overnight, like people, or...
No.
Or is this just strictly, this is strictly daycare?
It's strictly daycare. It's our understanding that we are not allowed to board dogs overnight.
Okay.
And therefore, we would not ever do so.
Okay. And what are the, what are the planned hours for the business?
From 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay. Cool. No, great. Again, this, this makes total sense. I think it's a great, it's a great idea. It's going to be a great use for the, for the property, you know, in that area, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Well, I'm certain that it will be a booming business. It's a great location. As I mentioned earlier, I've been to the site. It's neat, it's clean, it's orderly. You're doing a great job over there. I'm sure there's more pandemic puppies that you can shake a stick at, but I think overall, the work you're doing on the driveway, the parking lot and the like, and has always welcomed businesses in the City of Lowell, especially on that corridor. We don't want to start having vacant properties, because that's one of the main entrances to the city. And this, this will give visitors and newcomers, as we grow bigger downtown with lofts and condominiums, that we can offer these types of services to people with pets. So, I'm in support of this. I wish you continued success down there. And any other comments or concerns with the board? We have no conditions. May I have a...
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-29 for a special permit approval under sections 12.4 for 680 Rogers Street to operate a dog kennel and grooming service.
May I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Proco. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve.
Member Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proco.
Approval. Congratulations. You've been approved.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving forward under new business, ZBA 2021-30 for a special permit, Croissant Tran at 1519 Grant Street, section 12.1 subsection B. Croissant Tran is seeking a special permit to construct a two-family residential structure on a vacant lot at 15 and 19 Grant Street. The subject property is located in an urban mixed-use UMU zoning district. The application requires special permit approval from Lowell zoning board of appeals per article 12.1 subsection B for use and any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, counsel. How are you this evening?
Good evening. Fine, thank you. Attorney Catherine Flood here on behalf of Croissant Tran, owner of property located at 15 and 19 Grant Street. She is here with me today as well as our engineer, Matt Hammer. We are here tonight requesting a special permit under Article 12 for use to construct a duplex with required parking in a UMU zone in a variance pursuant to section 5.1 for relief for front yard setbacks. The property is currently a vacant lot located... The property is currently a vacant lot located in an urban mixed-use zoning district consisting of approximately 4,900 square feet with 70 feet of frontage on Marshall and 70 feet of frontage on Grand Street. The applicant proposes to construct a duplex facing Marshall Street due to the residential use. The struct, construction of the duplex complies with the city of Lowell zoning requirements in a UMU district in most respects, except for the front yard setback. Per section 5.1, the front setbacks in a UMU shall be consistent with existing setbacks on the block. The plan that we have submitted shows a front setback of 20 feet where the existing buildings in the neighborhood are zero to seven feet. So we are requesting a variance. We feel that the green space, more trees along the lot lines, and having it set back will allow privacy in the backyard for people to use the deck. The development will provide new residential units in the city in need of new housing. The development will clean up a vacant lot and enhance the neighborhood. The project aligns with the intent of the Sustainable Lowell 2025 Plan by providing safer, higher-quality and efficient townhomes within close proximity to the train station. The property is located within the Lowell Tree Planting Zone and is eligible for tree plantings by the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation. The new plan we show shows shade trees along the lot lines, which we intend to utilize. The proposed development does not pose any negative impacts on the environment. The duplex, as shown on the lot, will allow the, the project to have sufficient green space and trees. The city of Lowell wastewater approved the stormwater management system as shown on the plan submitted. The parking requirements are met by providing two spaces per dwelling unit. The proposed dwelling unit located on two, on the corner of Grand and Marshall Street. The driveway, as shown on the plan, will be shown off of Marshall Street where there is not as much traffic as Grand Street. There are no negative impacts on public services or utilities planned for the project. The project overall has a positive impact on the city, providing for additional taxes and housing for residents and developing a lot that is vacant. Matt Hammer will now take over and go over the plan that was submitted as revised today.
Thank you, Counselor.
Good evening, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering. I like the new microphones that we have.
Yeah, good, yeah, yeah, it's a nice, it's a welcomed addition to the chambers.
Yeah, it's nice.
Makes public hearings very convenient for all.
So here's the corner parcel here. Here's Grand Street and Marshall Street. We're proposing a duplex building with a 10-foot setback off the side with two driveways to access each of the garage areas in the front of the building. One of the comments that was provided by Department of Planning and Development was to add the 50% compliance to the landscape space in front of the front facade. So we've added that in the revised plan that the, that the board has. We've also added additional trees along the streetscape, which would be shade trees. And then it allows the building, which is tucked back to this side, to have more of a buffer from the traffic along Grand Street itself. And we felt with this design, when the cars are coming in and out to the front of the unit and the lights and everything, and that functionality is in front of the unit, and it's less likely to affect neighboring properties that way. There's also a deck in the rear of each of the properties, and that'll allow for some use for each of the families, which would presumably be moving into each one of these townhouses. So with this type of layout, with it set back from the street, each person will feel as though they have their own amenities for each of the units as opposed to, you know, having something up on the street and having a parking area in the back, where you're going to have a, you know, individual property owners interacting with each other with something in the rear of the property. In this way, they feel as though they have exclusive use to those areas in the front of the properties itself. We're also going to be providing some stormwater mitigation here for the roof drains as well as the driveway runoff itself. We'll also, as part of this, be doing sidewalk improvements out in front of the units, which are shown here as well with handicap ramps and transitions to the existing walkways for the driveway entrances. We had a, a brief meeting with the Department of Planning and Development today. And from that meeting, we discussed our methodology of locating the duplex on the property. And during that discussion, you know, we felt as though to help the buffering from the road, we would add an additional five trees than the, from the three that was originally proposed. So we added those to the plan and just updated the zoning chart was the only change on the plans. And I could put it to the board for any comments.
Thank you very much. I, I do like the increased green space. That's, that's a bonus in the bonus round, so...
Yeah, there, there's going to be, it's very well landscaped.
Yep.
You know, this property could have had a density of three units. And I think they're going to get more value out of it by having a better quality living space with it only having two as well.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, thank you very much. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public hearing. Like, anyone wishing to speak in favor?
I actually have a petition.
Certainly. Thank you.
51 residents in Lowell.
Oh, won, wonderful. So for, for public record, we are presented by counsel with 151 citizens of the city in favor of this petition, which bodes very well for, for the owners. Thank you very much. We'll submit that into the documents. That being said, any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Mark?
I think it's a great plan. I really do. And it's a win-win. Tremendous benefit to the city by redeveloping a vacant lot and a benefit to a new homeowner. So I look forward to seeing the project undertaken. I'll vote in favor.
Thank you. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with Mark. I think, you know, you're looking at the, at the neighborhood with a new construction. It would only beautify, you know, that area. And given the amenities that it's closer to the transit, also if it's a family with children, it's close to the Boys and Girls Club. And of course, you know, improving the, the neighborhood itself, I, I think it would be a great project. It's, it's better than an empty lot, so anything would be an improvement. So I would vote in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with my colleagues. I think this should be a great addition to the city, you know, it's a vacant lot. You know, it could only add to the, to that neighborhood and to the, to the city as a whole. And on a side note, I know Ms. Chan and the family owns that sub shop next door, and they run a great business. So I, I know that they're responsible people and just, they're also people who like to, to give and many causes in the community, community events. So thank you for your philanthropy with all the different events, so we appreciate it. So I, I think this project is, is going to be a great benefit to the city, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. And thank you for sharing those comments because I'll yield, Sean, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
Stay in order, stay in order. Don't gavel yourself.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, this, this, it seems like, no, this is a very decent project, very well put together as always, Mr. Hammer and counsel, your presentation. The only, the only other things I'm thinking of, I know, looking at the comments from DPD, I mean, there were comments about trying to get the, moving the building up closer towards the property line to try to get it to fit in a little bit more, you know, with the areas. I think the, for the, we're dealing with a front yard setback, and the, the requirements are to be somewhere between zero and seven feet. What's the distance of the driveway now again, Mr. Hammer? I'm trying to...
The front facade to the right of way is 20 feet.
20 feet? I mean, ultimately, I really have no problems with it. It's just I'm trying to figure out a way, if, is it, is there a reason why we can't move it up a little bit more? Just to kind of, just to kind of fit it in a little bit and have a little bit more area in the back for, you know, because it looks like, at least from the back end on the lowest portion, you've got an 18-feet buffer between the deck and the, and the rear property line. Just trying to give a little bit more back, back green space for, for potential residents. I don't know, is there some reason we can't move it up a little bit more?
So the rationale is to have that 20 feet to fit a car?
For the car, yeah.
In front of the garage?
To fit the, fit the dimensions and...
Yeah. And with this, and with this configuration, it actually reduces the total amount of impervious that you would have if, if you tried to push the, the building up to the front and come around back. Because you'd have to use the, the whole access drive
Yeah.
to get to the, the garage as, as pavement. So you do get a significant amount of open space
Yeah.
and green space out of this configuration.
No, I, I, I'm sure, I, I, I just wanted to double check and make sure. I'm just trying to figure out if there's a little bit more.
So, so we did look at that.
Yeah.
You know, doing, putting, bringing that up to the street. And then one of the, the, you know, one of the things you lose is that whole deck
Yeah.
amenity, which can be one of the greatest amenity, and then amenities that you can have when you're, you know, you have a very little space to use outside. And we're on a corner lot, that became important.
Yeah.
So when you do push that building up, you, you don't really have a decent deck amenity that you feel is a, you know...
Yes. I agree with you, and then, no, I'm just, just trying to just checking in and see if there's more that can be done. But I mean, I, I know you do, you do fantastic work on these, and I know you do, and you do diligence, and I'm sure that this is the way it's going to, the best way it's going to be set out, so... And I do like the fact that, you know, we established it with the trees on the right-hand side and the Grand Street side. That adds a better feature there too, to try to keep it, to, to make it look, look better, so... But again, it's, it's a very, very well put together project for a lot that's been vacant for a long, long, long time and needs some development. This is the best way to do it, and fantastic work, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I, I agree with my colleagues. I think it's a wonderful use of the space. You have a business in the city. For the record, I received dozens of phone calls in regards to this petition, all favorable. Everyone spoke very highly of your efforts over there with your business and now turning a vacant lot into a home for people to come and live in our great city. And it's a tribute to you, what you're giving back to the city that is yours. We thank you for that. And adding more living space in tight space and coming up with a great plan is, this is, this is what Lowell's really all about. So I, I want to thank you on behalf of all the people that called me. You're clearly very caring community people, and thank you for that. I'm in favor of this. I think it's a great plan, and it will serve the city for years to come. Your sign looks great in front of the sub shop. So thank you once again. Any other comments or concerns by the board or DPD? None being heard. May I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-30 for a special permit approval under section 12.1B for 1519 Grand Street to construct a two-family residential structure on the vacant lot.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the vice chairman. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved.
Member Peck.
Approved.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approval.
May I have unanimous approval? We wish you the best of luck.
We need a vote on the variance.
We need a vote.
To add setback.
All of them.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it wasn't in the original one?
May I have a, yeah.
Sorry, it wasn't on the agenda, the special permit was on the agenda. We've got a variance too.
So we'll take a second. May I have a motion for the variance?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2021-30 for variance approval under section 5.1 for front yard setback for 1519 Grand Street to construct a two-family residential structure on the vacant lot.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the vice chair. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved variance.
Member Peck.
Approved the variance.
Member Callahan.
Approved variance.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approved the variance.
The variance has been unanimously approved. It's wonderful to see you all back in chambers. Thank you for all your efforts. We'll submit this into the public record on the 151.
Thank you, keep me on my toes, counsel.
Yes, thank you very much for your making us aware. We are, no, no, we'll be fine. Thank you, though. Due diligence for the public good. Moving forward under other business, we have minutes for approval for July 26th meeting, 2021. Members of the board, any edits, revisions, concerns, additions? None being heard. May I have a motion to accept?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for July 26, 2021.
May I have a second?
Second.
A roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved and accept the minutes, July 26, 2021.
Member Peck.
Accepted the minutes for July 26, 2021.
Member Callahan.
Accept minutes for July 26, 2021.
Member Briere.
Acceptance.
Member Proko.
Accepted the minutes, July 26, 2021.
Any other comments, concerns to the board? None being heard. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the vice chair. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your time.